First item of business, I'll make a motion to reconvene and open session at 7:00 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yep.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Here.
Mrs. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Leclaire.
Here.
Next, I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of February 26, 2025. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee roll call please.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclaire.
Here. I mean, yes.
Will you please stand with me and join me with a moment of silence and a pledge? I'd just like to say that in the past month, we lost four key people in our district. We lost Erin McCarthy, Mary Ann Guy, Henry Hank Hatcher, and Olga Liberto. They've all been with us for at least a minimum of 20 years. So during this moment of silence, please keep them in mind. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I believe we have guests. We have Governor Pothier Elementary speaking tonight or addressing us? Hello? Would you want to... Do you want us down there?
Yeah, it is a video.
Okay. All right, so...
Hello?
Hello.
I just jumped.
Race is right.
It is the agenda.
What are you talking about?
It's the agenda.
I get it. You all wore sweater vests. I love it.
I know, I forgot mine. Mr. Burke, yes, you just shared the story with me. And I see that you are all wearing sweater vests. I get it. I read the story. I am impressed that everybody followed the rule. Yeah, that's... You should have told the rest of us. I will. I'm waiting for this thing to come on. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Kathy Carvalho, the principal of the Pothier Citizens Elementary Campus. And tonight, I'm talking about a program that we're doing all over the campus, but I'm focusing on Pothier. I'll be back in April to talk about Citizens. One of the things we've been really working hard on at... On campus are adult student connections. And we've done surveys and found that this has really improved the culture and climate in the school. There are still a few kiddos out there that had connections, but we felt needed stronger connections. So we tried out this program called Check In and Check Out. And... Are you doing it, or am I doing it? I have to run back and forth. The video kind of messed up. Nope. So this is how it all started. We, a couple of years ago, started with SOAR expectations, meaning safe on task, act responsibly, and respectful. And we started it out at the classroom level, and it's continued to grow. So now, in all the shared spaces, we have SOAR expectations. And when students are caught soaring, they get SOAR cards. They can use those to purchase things in the store... SOAR store. Or they can save them up. And over the couple of years we've been doing it, they now save them. They are for the principal helper. They can prance around in the eagle costume. They can go to the SOAR zone, which is board games, arts and crafts, things like that. So they've been saving them for the bigger prizes. And the biggest seller besides Lunch with a Friend is being the eagle. So we have a lot of eagles online right now, waiting to have their turn. So Check In and Check Out is a great program, and we've seen a big difference in how it connects the school, the child, and the home, because the parents have part of this. So it gives some students opportunities to have adult champions working with them. So some of the staff have agreed to be the champions in the school. They meet with students, and they agree upon some goals for the students that are around our SOAR goals. It gives them encouragement and support, and a lot of great internal motivation and self-esteem, because they really do shout out at the end of the day how proud they feel when they make their goals. The papers go home to the parents, so the parents stay connected to what we're doing in school, and they can also encourage and support them at home. So they come in in the morning. They each have an adult champion. They meet with them. They go over the goal. The teachers then have them for the day and give them feedback all day long on how they're doing. The end of the day, they bring their goal sheet to their adult champion, and they find out if they're meeting their goal. And we actually had a child the other day said, "I'm kind of sick of this goal. Can I make it bigger?" So it is working. They do, you know, and he calls his mom every single day from my office to say if he met his goal. He moved it up from 65 to 70, and he said, "I'm at 70," which is just making it, but I did it. So they are taking ownership, and those connections they're making with the adults in the school are really changing their course in our school. So that is a sample of a goal sheet for a student. Some of them have one goal, some have two, but they're all the SOAR goals, whether they're staying on task, or acting responsible, or safe. And every block of the day, breakfast, snack, recess, ELA, math, science, all gets a check. Down the bottom is their goal. They fill that out with their champion. And if they meet their goal for six weeks in a row, they become a graduate. Lovely to say that we now have an assistant coach named London. She's in second grade. She was a spitfire in kindergarten, a spitfire in second... In first grade. And this year, she joined this Check In/Check Out program and was able to graduate in six short weeks and meet her goal. She now walks proudly around with a lanyard. She goes with the adult champion in the morning, checks in with the students. They love it. She sits down with them. She's only seven years old, and she'll say, "What's your goal today? What are you going to do to meet your goal?" And the kids love her. Now, let me see if I can get this to work. No. Oh, boy, they're all on. Uh-oh, help. That's not going to work. Hang on. I think I have to do something. Just a minute, please. Revamp.
Okay.
So it's this one first. All right.
Jaden, can you tell me what SOAR stands for?
Safe, on task, responsible, and respectful.
So that little girl on... Oh, you can't... How come they can't see them?
She can...
Yes, she is. The girl on the left is the coach. That's London on the left. And that's her little responsibility.
Safe, on task, responsible, and respectful.
And then...
Jaden, how do you feel when you meet your goal for the day?
I feel happy and proud of myself, because I get to go to the SOAR store, and I'm... And I just feel happy.
Jaden, how do you feel when you check in with London every morning?
Good.
Why do you feel good?
Because I like when she checks in and checks out.
Okay.
So that's...
Jaden, how do you feel when you check in with London?
So this is... That little boy's in kindergarten, and that's London, his coach.
So Brooklyn, can you tell me what the SOAR expectations are at our school?
Safe, on task, responsible, and respectful.
And can you tell me how we show those things in our school?
Safe, hands and feet to ourselves, on task, is doing our work. Acting responsible is not talking back, and respectful is being respectful of teachers.
Thank you. Brooklyn, how do you feel when a teacher recognizes your good behavior?
I feel proud and happy.
Why do you think having SOAR expectations in our school makes our school a better place?
Because if we're doing the SOAR expectations, then we're all going to be aligned, and we're not going to be having chaos.
Chaos, because that's what our school is.
So Brooklyn, can you tell me what the...
Sorry, this didn't...
Can you tell me why we have SOAR expectations in our school?
To keep the school safe and doing what it's supposed to.
Why is it important for us to be kind and respectful in our school?
So that people don't get upset, and you don't get in trouble.
Can you tell me why we have...
And this is our assistant coach, London.
London, can you tell me how the Check In/Check Out program helps students?
It helps them with their emotions, and it helps them learn how to be better.
London, can you tell me how you feel being a coach?
I think it's fun, because you can teach kids how to be nice and how to use their manners correctly.
Sorry, the videos didn't copy correctly or something. It could be the person that sent them. Not telling you it was me. So when we started this in about October, November, at Pothier, we have 10 students that are in our program. And Coach London is our first graduate. And at Citizens, we have six students enrolled, but we've had two graduate. And they walk around with landings in the morning. Everybody knows they're a coach. They're very proud, and it has totally turned around their experience as a student, and they are helping other students. So we see they're becoming leaders. Like I said, London was somebody that... She wouldn't even tell us her name on the first day of school. We didn't know what grade she was in. And she is now leading these other children, walks around the building, "Oh, you're doing a good job on your goal." And she's really taken on that leadership, which we want to see. And they're proud to be at the school and part of the community. She comes to school every day now, which she was an attendance issue. They're collaborating better. They're being able to, on grade level, she's in second grade, working with K and one students, and they're solving problems together. They're willing to help each other. And so far, Pothier Citizens Campus has no bully reports. So we do see this as a positive program. And the teachers are experiencing collective efficacy, because they can work with other staff to help with students, and it's improving the culture and climate. And they are learning new best practices to work with the students that have lots of different needs in a positive manner. And those are our four students that you just saw. Brooklyn, who's in second grade, Jaden, who is in first, London in second, and Daniel was a K student. They all were very excited. They're unfortunately, because they were six and seven, their parents said seven o'clock was too late. Otherwise, we would have had them here to be in person. So that's why we interviewed them. But it's a great program. We're going to continue it. And I think that connection has made a big difference. Students are now asking to be in the Check In and Check Out program, because they see that, you know, oh, I'm... They don't look at it as a problem. They look at it as a solution to being helpful in the school and being able to work with others. So thank you for giving me this time to present. I know Mike sent the schedule out... Or told us. He has 50 people coming. We got reading week. He got 50 people. Yes. So he'll be giving us the schedule soon. Thank
Again, many thanks for this great program. That was very interesting. It was great to see the kids so excited and involved. So that's great stuff. Thank you. Next, we'll go into Good and Welfare. And for anyone addressing a school committee during Good and Welfare, please begin with your name and address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that a committee cannot respond to you during Good and Welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team, or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. Is there anyone who would like to address the school committee?
Oh, no.
My name is Melissa Bubble, 650 Third Avenue, Wensocket, Rhode Island. As much as I love attending these meetings, I have not... Unfortunately, I have not been here due to a promotion that has changed my hours. I now fall into the population of parents that cannot attend meetings due to work unless they take time out. I am now your living and breathing proof of that. I'm thankful that I am able to be here tonight due to some wiggle room with my work, but I assure you, not everyone has that, and not everyone can afford to take time out. I, however, do agree, parents still should attend at least one meeting a month, so both sides, yours and parents, can be heard. At... That any parent may be able to work with their... That with that, any parent should be able to work into their schedule. Now on to business. Yes, I'm still against the new school. I'm fighting now, though, more for parents to be more educated with these meetings and city council meetings as well. I also have heard that Globe has been shut down due to leaks. There are now rumors, not sure how true they are, that OSHA has checked the school as well. My question is, why isn't more information being sent to parents? How bad is the school? If it's bad enough that they are out of school for the rest of the week, how will they return to school next week? What about potential mold? These issues did not happen overnight. These are issues that have been hidden and not addressed as they come up until it got too bad, like the other schools. If a part breaks on your house, do you fix it right away? I certainly hope so. If not, it will also be in disrepair eventually. And now that one thing is 10 things broken. Wensocket has had a bad reputation of doing this, of being mostly supported by grants and funding from the state and RIDE. And with RISE trying to essentially take public schools out of the picture, we need to be able to stand on our own, and we need to bring more money in for our own and rely less on the fundings. I know that is easier said than done. But we have schools, yes, schools in disrepair, not just Globe or others in other schools, up for closure, like Holman, but also the high school, too, and other elementary schools as well. Let's face it, our school system as a whole needs financial help. And we have these kids going into these schools. Some of them may be even toxic with mold or anything else that is going on that parents either know about or feel that they can't do anything about. While we hope for a new school to be built, why are we not doing anything now for these kids and their health? And why do we wait so long to fix things? Even these... Even these new middle schools need some work. I hear that hasn't been even done. The high school, I hear, is also so bad. But what are we... What will we do when that is also in disrepair? Are we just not going to repair that either? Are we going to close it and have an athletic field again too far from the school? Someone isn't thinking about Wensocket's future. We will soon have new buildings, old decaying schools, and no land left in Wensocket. And yes, I assure you, I will also be speaking at next week's city council meeting on Monday at 7:00. Thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go into the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the February 12, 2025 closed meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any corrections, changes to those? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclaire.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the February 12, 2025 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any changes to those minutes? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclaire.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into the consent agenda, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does anyone want to take anything out of order? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclaire.
Yes.
Next, I'll ask Ms. Sanchez to give us her student representative report.
Hello, good evening. Considering the fact that we just had February vacation, there's not too much to report, but there are two major things that I want to highlight. First thing being our, what I call the senior talk slash our, like, pep rally banner preparation. Seniors had a brief assembly with Mr. Ernest and class advisor, Mrs. Wheaton, to discuss senior events, portfolios, and credit recovery, which is very important, and gets you on the track to grad... Making sure that you're keeping track for graduation. Prior to the meeting, two class officers, which were myself and Ariana Hay, gathered supplies to create a senior banner. And what we essentially had them do was every senior got to choose a color of paint, and we painted their hands, and they got to stamp their hand on the banner. And then afterwards, once all the handprints dried, we wrote seniors, class of 25, on it. Super cute, definitely promoted a sense of unity at the pep rallies, which was... And it kind of like got everyone to have a little fun after the meeting. Pep rallies, so at the last meeting, I had mentioned that we have two new student council advisors who were organizing a pep rally. And honestly, I believe that they were successful. Our freshmen and sophomores experienced their first pep rally ever at WHS, which was very exciting. And seniors and juniors definitely got to show them what real school spirit is, as we played many games and gave a variety of sneak peek performances for theater, cheer, dance, and band. The theme was also very fun, since it was glow-in-the-dark, and we got to do face paint and handout glow sticks. And then the really, really exciting part on my behalf is the fact that top 10 was announced for 2025. So top 10 GPAs were announced for class of 25 at a breakfast with guidance, counselors, class advisors, and principals. Those who accomplished this include. So now, coming in number one, our valedictorian is Monsor Diang. Saludatorian is Isabella Piette. Number three, Ariana Hay. Number four, Faith Paskanik. Number five, Angelia Ortiz. Number six, Leilani Sanchez.
Yeah.
Thank you. Number seven, Eliana Crump. Number eight, Jacob Brosny. Number nine, Aiden Messer. And number 10, Lydia Pimison. We just want to extend a congratulations to all their hard work and dedication. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Any comments for Leilani?
Just congratulations.
Yeah, great job. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file our student representative report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Jesus. Dr. McGee, would you give us your superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm going to start with the personnel matters update. To date, we have 15 paraprofessional positions that are vacant. It's still a high number, but it is starting to get a little bit lower week by week. We have one assistant principal position that is vacant. That is at Pothier Citizens Campus. We have one secretary position that is vacant, and we are down to two teaching positions across the district that are vacant. So we're close to zero for the teacher vacancies. So I want to thank the principals and their staff, and I want to thank Ms. Kitchen and her staff for working hard to try to get these numbers down as close to zero as we possibly can. The second agenda item that I'd like to talk about is I'd like to talk about the Globe Park roof leak. So I have a lot of information to give out here this evening. And I... It was... It was good that we have some... We had somebody from Good and Welfare here that had some questions and some thoughts. So I hope... Hopefully, I can answer some of those questions and maybe dispel some rumors that are... That might be out there. So just to give you a sense of the timeline, over vacation, there were some leaks that were detected in the roof at Globe Park. Initially, those leaks were in just a few sections of the building. Now, unfortunately, because we have aging buildings in our district, we unfortunately have frequent leaks across the district. And the situation that we've had for many years is because we, the district, has not had the funds to completely replace roofs, we have had to do the best we can, which is to patch roofs. So we've done this for a long, long time. Globe Park happens to be one of the three schools that's going to be closed. And we are very, very fortunate that we are going to be building a new school. And an example of why we're closing three schools is exactly what's happening at Globe Park. The state of Rhode Island, very fortunate, they're paying 93% of the costs of the new school. So unfortunately, and I agree with those out there who say we wish that the city could support the district more with funds, they can't. So what we've been able to do, because we've been extremely fiscally prudent over the years, and I want to, you know, I want to point to Mr. Perrier and his fiscal leadership in the district over the past 10 years, we're in a position that we even have a fund balance where we can use 6% to cover the remaining costs of the new school. So there's a reason we're building a new school. And it's the... One of the examples, it's what's happening at Globe Park. And for many years, because we can't afford to put... We haven't been able to afford to put a new roof on Globe Park. It's been patch after patch after patch. That school is very old. It was built in the early 60s. Even the new wings that were... That were built, I don't know, 30 or so, 35 years ago, with a different type of a roof surface, those are also leaking. So that's sort of a little bit of a history. So anyway, fast forward to vacation. It was discovered... There were leaks that were discovered, and we did what we normally would do. You know, we remove ceiling tiles and try to mitigate as best we can, so that students and staff, you know, can come to school. We were... We discovered on Monday more areas of the building that were leaking. And then on Tuesday, there were even more. So I was there on Tuesday morning. I met with Mr. Perry and I... Perrier and I were there. I was actually with Mr. Perrier on the roof, looking to check, you know, if there was any indication of where the leaks were coming. And if you understand leaks, it could be leaking in the building here, and it may not be coming from that particular section of the roof. It might be coming from another section of the roof. And, you know, water just sort of seeks, you know, the path of least resistance. So we were fortunate that when we were up there, after we, you know, after we looked at the roof, and I'm certainly not a roof expert, we reached out to a company, a restoration company, and that is EnviroClean. And that's a company that we've been working with for many years. When we had restoration work that we did at the Career Center years ago, that was the company that came out. They were... They were very, very, you know, we were very fortunate that they could... They came out that day. they came out that day. They got there, they, they looked, they were looking at the different areas that were leaking. And literally while they were there, more areas were leaking. So this is something that has been going on at Globe Park for, for many years, but not to this degree. There have been leaks there, but not the number of leaks that we have currently. So again, we were fortunate that they, they got there. We reached out to the contractor that we are currently working with at the high school to, to look at the roof. He couldn't come out yesterday, but he was able to come out today. Looked at the roof, met with Mr. Perrier. And we are meeting with them tomorrow morning at Globe Park to talk about what exactly we need to do. Patching is not going to, is not going to work. It appears as though patching that roof is not going to work. It's been patched so much that it, it's, it's coming in so many different areas that it, it's, it's almost impossible to patch every single part of that roof. So we're meeting tomorrow with the, the roofer. We're going to be getting some quotes as well. But we're, we're going to be talking about what it's going to take. We're also going to be meeting with the folks from EnviroClean who have been there all day today mitigating the areas. And when I say mitigating the areas, removing ceiling tiles, going up into the, above the ceiling tiles to see what areas are wet. Those areas are going to have to be removed. I, I can say that unless, unless they, they, they snuck in. OSHA was not there this week. I can tell you who was there. It was EnviroClean. And they conducted two days ago and yesterday and today air testing. So we'll be receiving the results from that air testing. We should receive those results probably late Thursday, late in the afternoon tomorrow. That, that's what they're estimating. So they were there, so, so we have conducted air quality tests. And as I said, we'll be getting those results. So I, in fact, did reach out to the community, as did Principal Kennel. Yesterday, late afternoon, I reached out yesterday, late evening, because I wanted to get as much information as I could before I reached out to the families to let them know that there's a situation. And that situation is that we have many leaks in the building. Unlike other situations in the past where those leaks have been contained, these are not. So as superintendent, my job is to ensure the safety and the welfare of our students and our staff at all of our schools. So I made the decision that we were going to close the building today, tomorrow, and Friday, because I don't want students or staff in that building right now until potentially we get the air quality results back and it's determined that it's safe for students and staff to return. What I also don't want to do is I don't want to put us in a position where we rush back into the building when we don't fix the problem. Because it doesn't make any sense to go back into the school when the next rainstorm, now mind you, this, this, we all experienced the amount of ice and rain and melting that we've experienced over the last week. That contributed to this situation. We haven't had this situation there in the past. This has been unique. But nonetheless, I don't want to go back in until the situation is, is, is mitigated. So as I said, we're going to be meeting tomorrow. A group of us will be meeting. We're going to be discussing our options. And we're going to be discussing our, so we're going to be discussing the options in terms of how to mitigate, how to repair. And then we're going to be discussing instructional options. Now, I haven't made a decision yet, but I can tell you in the letter that I sent out to the families yesterday, I, I was, I thought I was pretty explicit when I said that we were going to be meeting with the roofers because I can't make a decision if I don't have all the information. I need the information from the professionals who are going to repair the roof and the professionals who are going to mitigate the interior of the building. I, I'm the kind of person that I don't like to make a decision without information. So there's going to be a lot of people tomorrow who are going to be talking and I will make a decision, as I put in my, in my letter to the, to the families. So I suspect that my hope is, is that by the end of the day tomorrow, I will have a good sense of what needs to be done, what the plan of action is to fix the roof and to make sure that the environment is safe for our students and our staff to reenter. That could mean that we have to relocate some students because there are some, there are some classes at Globe Park, some self-contained classes that will need to, will, will more than likely need to be relocated because I don't want those students or any other students going back into a building where I'm not positive that the, the, the air quality is, is, is appropriate. We may end up, I, I'm exploring potentially moving some, some classes to other locations. I haven't made any decisions yet because quite honestly, we don't have one area where we can move the entire school while the work is being completed. I want to be, I, I want to, I want to be prudent. I want to make a decision that makes sense. I don't want to make a decision too hastily just because people want information immediately. I want to make a decision that's smart. We may have to at some point next week begin for an, an amount, a certain amount of time, virtual learning for the students there. Now, there are some students who, where virtual learning is not appropriate. And we will make the necessary modifications. As I said, we, we will be looking for locations across the district for self-contained classrooms that are at Globe Park. So I haven't made any decisions yet, but I would assume, I would think that I will have enough information by late tomorrow to notify the community, notify the Globe Park parents first. But I, again, I, I just, I want to make sure that the community understands that this was something that happened suddenly and we couldn't have prepared for this unless we had put a brand new roof on the school. And we haven't had the money to do that, quite honestly. If we had, we would have done it. So we haven't had a lot of time. But I will say that I'm, I'm very fortunate with the response of our contractors in literally coming to the school the morning I was there and providing information to us. They're, again, they're coming back. We're getting everyone back together tomorrow. We're going to look at it and I'm ultimately going to make the best decision for the safety, number one, of our students and our staff at Globe Park. These situations are terrible situations to have to deal with. Nobody ever wants to have to deal with a situation like this, but we're presented with it. And we're going to, as I said, I, I'm going to take the input from, from those that we're meeting with tomorrow, those, those experts who can tell us how long it would take to repair the roof. I, I, I don't know how long that could be. It, it, it could be weeks. I, I suspect it would not be the end of the year, but I'll know more tomorrow. And when I get that information, I will share that with the Globe Park parents and, and the community. I, I don't know what more at this point we could have done to prevent this, quite honestly. And I can tell you that we are working together so that we provide the best learning environment for our students moving forward. This is not a good situation. I'm not going to lie, I'm not going to make it sound like this is a good situation. But we have to make the best of this situation. And that's what I'm here to do. And I'm going to do what's best for our students. And I'm going to do what's best for, you know, all of the, all of the folks that work at Globe Park Elementary School. My, I, I'm always open to if anybody has any suggestions or if anybody has any questions. I, I, I sent, I sent a letter out, as I said, last night. Haven't, haven't received any, anything back from anyone. And, and, and everybody knows that I, I respond. I mean, I may not respond immediately, but I respond. And, you know, I, I'm, that's, that's, that's what's happening. That's where we are and that's the, that's the plan of action to date. And I, you know, we like to be transparent. And I certainly want to keep the parents in, in the know because they're the parents and they need to know what's going on. And I think to this point, I think we've done a, a good job of communicating to the families what, what's happened and, you know, where, where we're looking to, to, to go. So, but I, but again, I want to say that we, we have the mitigation folks in the school and we have the roofers who are going to be meeting with us. And I'm not going to send anyone back to that building unless and until it's safe. And it's, it's a, it's a major inconvenience for our families. I apologize for the inconvenience. But I felt as though it was not wise or prudent to send anyone back to that building this week until I had more information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would love to answer any questions that the committee might have at this time.
Just a couple of things, comments, and maybe a question.
One second, Chairman.
You can't talk about it. Sure, the mic's covered.
I know, but I don't know. Don't talk about it. It's a part of the word.
Okay.
Don't. Okay. You're going to get pushed out because there's nobody here. You might have wanted to do it.
So Mr. Superintendent, you're, you're done with your report?
That concludes my report.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Ms. Kepiscus and Vice Chair Burke to give us the policy subcommittee report.
The update from the policy subcommittee is we were scheduled to meet yesterday at 4:00 PM. In light of everything going on at Globe and the unavailability of Dr. McGee and Mr. Perrier, who are essential to at least two of the policies that were on our agenda for discussion, we made a decision to postpone that meeting. There was no policy meeting. The next policy meeting will be on Tuesday, March 11th at 4:00 PM.
And that concludes your report.
It does, Mr. Chairman.
That's a short report.
That was the shortest report. It was a short report. It was an impossible, short meeting. I like those meetings.
Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the policy subcommittee update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Ms. Morell to give us your, give us the special education update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of you is the snapshot as of February 5th. The data points listed below are tracked in the Skyward system. As of February 5th, we have a total number of 1,446 students receiving special education services within our schools from pre-K through 12th grade. This represents 27% of our total enrollment population of approximately 5,320 students. Right now, we have 21 students in our trans pro program. That's our 18 to 22 program at the high school. We have 121 students in our out-of-district placements with 117 of them with IAPs. And we have 190 students in private school slash pre-K programs, all with IAPs. That has grown. We've had, seen a significant increase of students moving into the district at the pre-K level. That concludes my report unless you have any questions.
Anyone?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. Do you know whether we're above or below the 1% for alternate assessment students yet?
So we're still in the process of some students with their evaluations to determine whether or not they still qualify for the alternate assessment. We have approximately about nine to 10 students that were taken off of alternate assessment. I don't have the exact numbers. Just this week, Kelly Gerard has been reaching out to all of our teachers that have provided the DLM alternate assessment to their students and to get the number of students that have come off and how many students will be taking that. So I should know soon.
Thank you. I know that RIDE has requested the waiver of the 1% again. Who knows if they're going to grant it, but I was just curious where we were. Thank you.
I believe we're getting close.
Ms. Leclerc, did you have comments? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the special education update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The financial update will be given at our next meeting. In new business, we have to vote on the non-renewal of a single probationary teacher identified in closed session. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
It is my, it's my knowledge that the resolution for the transportation of private school students is not yet ready for us to look at and to vote upon. So we'll, we'll do that hopefully at the next meeting.
Table. Make a motion to table.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Having no other items on our agenda, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:47 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.